Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 2nd meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room in case of mishap. Now join me as we salute the American flag.
(inaudible) Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Groupman. This is, the applicant is seeking approval, a special use permit in order to expand beyond the existing building he has for Ryan Beck Antiques Emporium located at 5229 Albany Post Road in Statsburg. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have no new material submitted. I was able to speak to the owner, Mr. Groupman, about why. And apparently, the new engineer he hired, Yolanda Jensen, went to Mr. Wheeler's office and could not work in the office with the files there, so she copied the files. And when she got home, discovered there, the CAD files were corrupted. So it's taken her two weeks to get the last files so that she can begin to make the corrections. So they asked for an adjournment to our April 6th meeting. But first, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? Any comments from the consultants or the board? Then I apologize that this is taking so long. It's not the planning board dragging this out. It's just a problem with the information from the applicant.
I guess I just have a question. Is the new engineer working with anybody other than the old files? Has she gotten like the pictures of the, they'd taken pictures of the truck backing, showing how the trucks have to back into the driveway to deliver oil and...
I don't believe so. And I still don't understand what that picture was. The neighbor took it at the meeting where I was at?
Yeah, they're showing how that, in order to get into a driveway, it has to stop in the roadway, basically right near the intersection.
Oh, that was her driveway?
And then it backs in.
Okay.
And so if it's, if this one's going to be even closer to the road, then that truck will have to stop and back in. It's going to be blocking that road, you know, momentarily or whatever. But it's, it makes for a fairly dangerous activity right there. The only thing I was thinking is if they could design the driveway so that it doesn't have to be backed into, so that maybe they could pull in and then, you know, do all their business on the property.
I thought we were requiring a turnaround on the site.
Microphone before I get yelled at by the director.
Sorry. I didn't bring the file, but my last recollection was that we were requiring a turnaround on the site.
It's when you, when they pull in, there's a turnaround to the right. The reason why I know that is because they first labeled snow storage to be placed there. And we pointed out that the truck could not turn around within the parcel. Snow was there.
Oh, okay. The last one I looked at just had, it was just a driveway with the...
Because it's been a little confusing, the back and forth with the applicant.
They have to have a turnaround. I mean...
Right. So anyway, that's what those pictures were illustrating, that without a turnaround, a truck has to park in the roadway right near the intersection to do its maneuvering. And I had not seen a plan that showed any kind of a turnaround. So I guess my question is, to me, that's kind of key and critical. And if the new engineer is not aware of any of this, we're going to get plans that don't have this, and they're going to have to be redone.
I assume she's working from the comments that we most recently issued, so...
I hope so.
I will, I will email Ms. Jensen.
Thank you very much.
I don't know that there's a way to provide those pictures to her. Donna, do you know what we're, pictures we're talking about? You weren't at that meeting either.
They came in right, yeah.
In other words, because they were submitted manually, they weren't digitally sent. So I'll just ask her to come and take a look at the file.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe I already emailed her the comments, but I didn't email the photographs, so...
Okay. Do you have them scanned into a file?
Well, Donna sent the photographs, so I could forward those to Yolanda if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
And I'll send her another copy of the comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? There being none, no public comment, make it a motion to adjourn to April 6th.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Hutchins-Statsburg Storage Phase 2. Mr. Turner is here representing the applicant. Briefly, as we know, we had already approved the addition of three storage units behind the building that was formerly PDQ Manufacturing at 4920 Albany Post Road. As one of the conditions, as part of the approval, was that the applicant get a DEC permit. Because the, there's a wetland just behind the existing parcel. As part of the process, the negotiation with the DEC, they requested that one building be moved forward about 10 feet or to the west. So because this is not de minimis, we circulated to County Planning, who we received their response. And they said that there was no, no comments. It was a matter of local concern. In addition, today, I spoke with Sean Bell, the Statsburg Fire Department Chief, who said that they had no issues with the layout. And I also inquired about the boulder removal that they had requested. The boulder removal is associated with the construction of the new buildings. So Mr. Turner had, we'd made that a condition, which means that they had to be removed before I could sign the site plan. Mr. Turner requested that it be made a note on the plans themselves, so that it would be, more or less, it'd have to be done as part of the overall site work and prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Chief Bell indicated that they had no problems with that because, again, the boulders, the access would be for the new buildings, not for the existing structure. And those were kind of two of our outstanding issues today. Mr. Turner, let me hand it over to you. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I have nothing else to add.
Okay. We also, I should add, say, we got a signed permit application associated with the site today, but Ms. Moss will need to review it for compliance before it comes onto an agenda.
Correct. Yeah, no, that's going to be a separate item.
Yeah, it was just, it came in the mail today.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any comments from the consultants? Ms. Axel, Senator, Ms. Polidoro?
Just, I did a review for the previous conditions of approval and then did a side-by-side comparison. And the resolution that was drafted reflects the remaining issues.
Thank you very much for that work. Ms. Polidoro, welcome back from, from almost jury duty, by the way. Any comments? And microphone needs to come to you, if you do.
No comments.
Then, just for the edification of the board, there was a lot of back and forth today about scale. I take it that was worked out?
Yes, the applicant advised us that the scale did not change once he redid the calculations. That it's the same number that was approved in October 2015, and therefore, no new special permit is needed.
And just for the record, the scale does include banked parking. And we have a percentage, I think, an increase of 31 percent this represents thus far, so there would still be room for 19 percent more from the base. And that's why it's so important we get these numbers right. So there being no comments, additional comments from the consultants? Let me start to my right, Ms. Denapoli. Any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Ms. Dexter?
I'm just curious about the green. There's like this green on the windows.
We actually have added a condition to this resolution that requires the applicant to remove all green decals and other adornments which are not shown on the elevations approved on October 21st, 2015, as part of the amended site plan. So you have an approved elevation set. Those aren't on it, so before the chair can sign the new plans, it has to come off.
Thank you very much.
Correct.
Mr. Murphy?
Nothing, just that the boulder removal seems reasonable.
Thank you. Yeah, we all, I, we're not allowed to discuss this in the quorum, so I sent out a query to my colleagues to see if they were okay with the removal of the condition over to the note. And they replied individually back, all of them, that they had no problems with it. So, Ms. Kane, any additional comments?
No.
And I have none. Would any member of the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution to approve an amended site plan, Hutchins-Statsburg Storage LLC, resolution number 15-3, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the amended site plan authorized to the chair's or his authorized designee to sign a site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval of the Department of Environmental Conservation of a wetlands permit for the instructions into wetland and wetland buffer. Three, revision of the zoning regulations table on sheet PZ-1.0 to correct the proposed scale values. Four, inclusion of Phase 2A and 2B boundaries on sheet PZ-1.1A. Five, revision of note 8 on PZ-1.1B to additionally require that landscaping be maintained for the life of the site. Six, add notation to sheet PZ-1.1B about silt fence and construction phasing schedule. Seven, on sheets SP-102 and SP-103, add back the delineation and the shading of Phase 2B. Eight, revision of the site plan to contain the following note, boulders at the northeast corner of the property at the end of the driveway from south crossroad shall be removed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for any of the three exterior self-storage units. Nine, removal of all green decals and other adornments which are not shown on the elevations approved on October 21st, 2015, and included in the amended site plan. Be it further resolved that the zoning administrators shall not endorse a certificate of occupancy for any of the three new exterior storage units until the required landscaping improvements have been installed and the boulders at the northeast corner of the property are removed in accordance with the amended site plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Do you want to copy the resolution? You already sent this anyway, right?
Just, I don't think I have some of the revisions on it. That'd be great.
You can have my copy. Thank you. It was a pleasure to work with you as always.
(inaudible).
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We look forward to working with you again in the future. Next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Kinder House Montessori. The applicants are seeking to turn a daycare center into...
A school.
Sorry, take a preschool into a daycare center, which requires, under state law, special use from the host municipality. That requires by also state law, public hearing. So make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? I'd just like to point out that there are no changes made to this site in our workshop discussion last, the last meeting. There'll be no increase in the number of students. There will be no increase in traffic. In fact, there may be a slight reduction in traffic. Again, no material changes planned, nothing at all whatsoever. It's just sort of a housekeeping issue. So any comments from the consultants or the board?
No.
There being none, no public comment, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Who has this resolution?
That'd be me. Resolution number 16-6A, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants amended site plan and special use, use permit approval to Kinder House Montessori to operate a daycare center as known, as shown on the approved site plan and subject to satisfaction of the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is under new business. First, make it a motion to release escrow for the Hyde Park Town Center in the amount of $629.70 from the engineer planner and $680.23 for the attorney.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. And a related item, Town, Hyde Park Town Center North, welcome, Ms. Leibl. And I'm just going to turn the, this is a pre-application meeting with the board. If everyone remembers, in a pre-submission request, they haven't made an application yet, so this is really an informal meeting. In addition, this, the materials submitted are not going to be at the more granular level of a full site plan. So I think the applicants are just looking to get some initial feedback and, but I'm going to quit speaking and let Ms. Leibl do so for the project. Thank you.
And basically, by the way, as we all know, but maybe no one in the viewing audience does yet, this is to, it is labeled as Building 1, to more or less tear it down, change the footprint slightly, and have a Mavis Tire and tire repair store go inside the site. Thank you. Again, I'm Kelly Leibl. You did such a great job giving this introduction, so I appreciate that. I always try to let everyone know what the purpose of the meeting is before I start the meeting, so we know where we are. And this is really the first meeting, so this is, these are always fun. The first ones are fun. It's a pre-application meeting, and our intent tonight is to present this project. And when I'm presenting it, I'm presenting it at 50,000 feet. And so when I say that, I mean, we haven't really dug in and done a lot of the things that everyone likes to see, like the streetscapes and sidewalks and a lot of the improvements that are the aesthetic improvements that you like to see on a site. We're really here tonight to present to you this property and talk to you about the process and hopefully come up with a collaborative plan. So we'd really like to get your comments tonight, hopefully some cohesive comments on the site plan, on the architecture of this building, and on the process, you know, to move forward. The site, I, what I did is I just gave you small 11 by 17, so you don't have to necessarily look at this plan. But can I get up and walk there?
Absolutely.
And you'll still record?
Do we have the walk-around microphone?
Thank you.
You hear much better at knowing how to use this than I am, I know.
Well, here, while you get that going, I'll get started. So I'll just go from here. So I think everyone knows this site. I grew up in Hyde Park, so I always called this the Grand Union Plaza, because that's what it was for me when I was here. And on this particular plan, that's on this board next to you, so on everyone's left is Route 9, and on the top of the board is Pine Woods Road. So I think everyone knows the property. The parcel...
You have to speak pretty close to it.
So the property consists of two parcels. So it's the large, and this is in black, and this is somewhat complicated because the property line goes through a parking lot. So that's why I just wanted to explain this to everyone. The properties are within this black line. So this would be the Grand Union Building. The larger parcel is 3.7, sorry.
Seven?
3.7, thank you, acres. And then this smaller parcel, that is really just a parking lot, that's to the south of the TEG Building, is a quarter of an acre. And so the applicants and in Hyde Park purchased both of these properties through a recent sale. They acquired the property as is, so I think everyone knows that the site is in somewhat of a dilapidated condition. And our hope is to really work on getting some improvements here and start to grow on those improvements. Why did they buy the property? Well, I think Hyde Park is a great area to work in. They're local developers, as you know, you've worked with them before, on the property to the south. And because there is some common ownership to the property to the south, it made sense because I think there's synergy and connectiveness and so forth that we can work on. So the property is 3.95 acres. There's four buildings on the site, as everyone knows. This building, number four, is the pet store, as everyone knows. I know you guys know this. This is a vacant building, the old Grand Union Building.
No, the pet stores are number three now.
Pet stores in three.
Number four is vacant.
And, thank you. I was just testing. And then this is the former, what I call the Malloy Pharmacy, when I grew up, that's what that was. Which was, yes, originally the Grand Union. I did give you some older photos so that you can see them. And so this is really the subject of tonight's discussion, is that building. And I say that because although in a different economic condition, we would love to be before you tonight to have a plan for all of these buildings and say, we're going to develop the whole site. But tonight, we have an applicant for this building, number one, and it's Mavis, Mavis Tire. And we'd like to focus on this particular area and understand that hopefully we can do some really great things over here and grow on that and hopefully attract some additional tenants. I mean, honestly, right now, you drive by and it's so dark. I don't know who would be interested, but it's great that we have this opportunity. The access, as everyone knows, is one way in off of that Route 9, so it's the right in, left in. There's an access off of Pine Woods Road that's part of this parcel. And then there's also this access that everyone knows that goes over to the McDonald's that isn't really memorialized in any easements or agreements and so forth, so we'd like to work on those. The property line does go through the middle of the parking lot, so this is owned by Gus Fannickiotis.
Sarukas.
Or Sarukas, sorry. And this is TEG Credit Union. So it is unique in that nature, and we're hoping to work with the other property owners to develop a better understanding of the use of, of those parking spaces. The utilities are a little weird, too, on this property. And we did do quite a bit of work before we got here, so that we had some information that we could present to you as far as what's going on underground. So as far as the sewage is concerned, the site has existing seepage pits. And we met with the Department of Health, and Joe Berger's the engineer of record, we, I was with him at this meeting. And the Department of Health said, go look at them, dig them up, see what's going on out there, and then we'll make a decision as to whether or not we think that they can be used for this particular project, because that is, of course, critical. I'm sure everyone saw the backhoes out there in the summer. And actually, digging up those seepage pits, they're in almost pristine condition, so they're in excellent condition. We plan on using those for this particular application. The next step is to present the application to the Health Department for reuse of those, so we were pretty happy about that.
Before you go on, can you explain to the board what seepage pits are? Is this like a cesspool?
It's almost like a septic system and the leach field's in one unit. So it's a, essentially, it's a concrete structure that has holes in it. So the solids fall down, the fluids leach out, and it acts as a, it's essentially a septic system.
Do they need to be, does it need to be pumped out periodically?
They are, at some, they do have to get...
I mean, they haven't been pumped out for a long time, because there's...
Right, nothing's been in there. So yes, they do require maintenance.
Thank you.
So if the fluids...
If the fluids leach out, does that mean there's an area around it?
There is. It's all gravel, amazingly enough. When we dug this up, Joe Berger, you know, kept calling me because he was so excited because he found gravel. And so there's gravel everywhere down there, which is great. So it really is a nice existing system that's there. And the user, the tenant that we're going to talk about, is a very low-volume user. So for this application, the Health Department says this works. Water is a little bit more confusing, but easily remedied. So we are talking to Peter Fadden, because they're taking over the water system. So I already spoke with him. He actually, I'm going to give something to Pete, went out and actually mapped the entire water line for me. So it was very nice that he did that. But it does come in off of Pine Wood Road.
Right.
And like today, you see water systems where they come in and you have a T kind of to each building. This one is linear, so it comes into one building, and then it goes to the next building, and then it goes to the next building, and then it goes to the next...
I saw it on the plans. It's crazy.
It's very...
Or at least they wouldn't do it that way now.
They wouldn't do it now, yeah. Further complicating it is this building is currently owned by Ruth Masuda, which is not on the property, and that has connectiveness with water. She's in the process of creating a separate water line. We will do the same thing. So our action would be, we're going to be putting in a master meter pit, which is required by Jessica County Water and Waste Water. We've already spoken with Peter Fadden about that. And we'll provide one service to this building. We won't provide any additional services at that time, because we don't know what we're going to do on the balance of the site. So water will come in off of the existing water main on Route 9. We aren't proposing any changes to the access points at this point. Of course, you know, that may evolve as we discuss this application with you, but we'd really like to keep the access points like they are. So as far as the proposed building, that Malloy Pharmacy building, I keep going at the Malloy Pharmacy building, even though it's vacant, is about 9,300 square feet, so 9,300 square feet. We're proposing a Mavis building that's 6,700 square feet. I did try to detail a lot of this in the EAF that I gave you.
This building, right here. What's the number, so everybody's...
One.
Everyone?
Yep. Building one. We would love to use the existing building, because the Mavis layout and orientation is actually pretty similar to what's there. However, the Mavis building is narrower and it's a little bit shorter. So we'd like to flush through that and potentially use maybe that exterior wall and the northern wall, but we're going to flush that out on our next submission that we present to you. We would like to, and I did give you a site plan, hopefully you have that in there. There's a blow-up on the corner that helps to explain the building a little bit more. The orientation of the building would be facing Route 9, so the bays would be facing Route 9. The entrance to the building for the customers is in the northwest corner, just right here. And the bays are accessed from the front of the building, again, facing Route 9. So we'd like to create some connectiveness with parking to both areas in that existing parking lot. We're proposing to create new sidewalks that bring you down to Route 9 on both sides, and then crosswalks that eventually will connect to the balance of the site. So it is difficult to think about what's going to happen in the future. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, so we really need to focus in this area. I did talk about in the EAF, this little pocket of green space that's over here. Now, that area right now, I think probably too many people don't see, but it's also wedged in between what we always call the gray building or the barn building. And we'd like to create a little pocket back there of some useful green space, whether it's sitting benches or seating areas where maybe people are at McDonald's and are walking over, or someone is across the street and wants to sit down, or they're waiting to get their car serviced, that could sit there for some period of time. So we need to figure out what a useful, useful things are in that, in that general location. But we'd like, even though it's small, I think it would be a great little pocket of space. We did provide you with elevations of the building, so I'm hoping, again, to try to get your feedback on the site, and again, on the elevations. And what I'd like to do is collect your comments. We'll go back and talk to Mavis and try to get a more complete submission back to you that has grading, has more detailed utility information. Stormwater is fairly de minimis, but we'll get the stormwater information back to you. And hopefully, next month or, you know, the month or after, we can have a complete application for you to review.
Wouldn't stormwater be a little less, because you're reducing impervious?
It is. It is a slight reduction in the impervious space, yes.
And one of the reasons why no one noticed is the green space, because it doesn't exist. You're shifting the building north somewhat. So because right now, the back wall is in perfect alignment with the front building owned by Mrs. Masuda, so you're actually adding a significant amount of space there. And I noticed that you put in picnic tables, seating, et cetera, and show some preliminary landscaping areas as well.
We did, yeah, just as an idea, that we'd like to focus on that space.
And then, before I turn it over to the board, I also just want to point out that I do not think that there'll be any traffic impacts, even though Ms. Leibl has given us the vehicle trips per day associated with the Mavis. That's because this was originally approved, I believe, with full build-out, and there's not any uses in it right now, with the exception of the feed store and now this. So I don't see any traffic impacts either evident. It'll be nice to see the site reactivated. It's, I've lived here 23 years, and I remember when the Grand Union was still functioning, and when Malloy Pharmacy slash, there was a liquor store there as well. I remember when it was all there, and it was bustling. And sadly, over time, it's become emptier and emptier and emptier. And we're grateful that investors decided to place their money in Hyde Park and move forward. So tonight, instead of starting with the consultants, I'm going to end with them. So I'm going to start to my left, if you're ready, Ms. Kane, to make any comments.
Well, I mean, this is very preliminary.
It is.
But my, my first reaction, I guess, is, yes, it's a great, it's a great thing to have new businesses interested in coming to Hyde Park. But I'm wondering about the green space being tucked in between the backs of all these buildings, and I'm not sure how usable that really is, that it might be better to move the building back and put the green space in front. I don't know. I just am...
Well, we actually, there's some setback issues in, in shifting that building. And I think we could actually create a pretty cool space in there, because it connects to the other plaza.
So if you think about creating a pocket there that people from the other plaza could also use, that would be accessible from a sidewalk, you know, that could carry them from the other plaza to this one, we'll look at that, but I think that it's a nice little pocket.
I'll have to go walk around and take a look at, at the exact layout. My other concern, and I'm relatively new to the planning board, so I'm counting on my fellow planning board members to help me out with this, but I believe that we have a code that says you have to have a plan for the whole site, at least some, you know, it doesn't have to be fully fleshed out detailed plan, but something. You can't just pick a spot and say, "We're going to do this." Is that correct or not?
A site plan is a site plan.
Yes.
In other words, when site plan is presented, it's the whole thing.
It's the whole thing, okay, so that is true.
Applicants are just requesting that we focus on one area because they don't have tenants for anything else.
Right, so we will show.
Segments before.
Please don't use that term, so.
We will.
Thank you.
We will show an entire site plan. The existing buildings will remain as existing because we don't have any plans for those buildings, and that, I think we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
But as I'm just going to say though, but as a, this is an integrated site, all the buildings share parking.
Mm-hmm.
So we can't just look at the building in isolation, we have to look at the parking that's associated with it, et cetera. In addition, just to give some historic background, I think all, most of us up here know about this because Mrs. Masuda served on the planning board with us. The parcel that's up front that's not labeled, it's just to the west of Building 1. Oh, thank you.
Yes, one or this.
Ooh, that's parking area, that one right there. Mrs. Masuda owns. That was part of the entire site originally, and so parking that was existing throughout was supposed to serve all five buildings. They're going to have to work out what they're going to have to work out with the owner of Mrs. Masuda because she appears to have two parking spaces left, that's all. But we need to look, in other words, the context of parking from, from this building existing elsewhere. So in other words, there, in my opinion, should be improvements to the parking area, at least in through here, that'll be likely to utilize the site.
Right.
But if you're wondering about how to utilize these buildings, you have the ability to, or we have the ability to require that they fully design the whole site, but it's difficult, at least in my opinion, to always do that if you have no idea what your tenants are because.
Sure.
They'll be coming back with something that doesn't, that will change and mutate.
Right.
Constantly. That noted, when we had Stop and Shop only proposed doing their half of that one unique building, we did say no, it's a site plan, and they only wanted to do their side of the parking lot, and we said you have to do the whole thing. But that's because that was one building, they're, it's united Stop and Shop, not just separated. And for example, we did not say, "At the same time, you have to redo Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union," to make it look the same. We could have, but we did not. So it's a balance between, you know, what we think the applicants can do, what seems realistic, and the individual aspects of the property. So I hope that answers your question.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Anything else?
Not right now.
Mr. Murphy?
I guess I ought to start with a confession that I was on the town board when this was originally approved.
Oh, good.
A whole shopping center.
Now I know who to call when I have a question.
And the connector road that you referred to before, if the minutes were ever found, okay, was a dedicated road that we mandated them to put in. The reason we did it, believe it or not, was we were trying to build enough traffic up on Pinewood Road to get a light at the end.
Oh, geez, isn't that funny? At the other end.
Connected the other shopping center.
Yeah, yeah, right.
To increase traffic.
Okay.
To get a traffic light back in the good old days.
Oh, my goodness.
When we, there wasn't any traffic light there. So whether or not they can find the minutes or whatever, but that was a road that was mandated and we required to be plowed and maintained and et cetera.
Okay.
Okay, it wasn't optional. It was something that they had to do. All right, and I want to thank you guys for making the investment here in town, all right? I will do everything in my power to help you because I think you're helping the town. All right, I think that's a big area that the town can all benefit from. And I applaud you for having a tenant and, you know, anything we can do, I can do. I want to help make that into, at, at the time we put in, believe it or not, it was a kind of forerunner. It had green, it had buildings different, and you know, the road going through it, it was kind of a, they, they worked with the Cornell Cooperative Extension Service, believe it or not, back in those days to design that thing, but obviously that was a lot of years ago.
Yeah, it made some sad changes, I'll have to say. I also will just point out, when I read through all the approvals from McDonald's, just to remind everyone, McDonald's was denied by the planning board. The zoning administrator, Mr. Sess de Roberts at the time, overruled the planning board, magically it appears, and gave an approval anyway. But when you read the rest of the minutes, the reason why the planning board did not approve it.
Here's the job.
There was a big discussion about pine trees being removed, but really, when you read the minutes, it's because they were afraid the connector road wouldn't be built. That's, they didn't think that, that there was a way to force that to happen. It did happen anyway.
Okay.
So, but that's, that was their basis, was they couldn't be certain, and it was a, we'll say a different time period back then.
Yeah, it was the first McDonald's not to have golden arches.
It's funny, if you watch, if you read some of the minutes, some of the planning board members.
It was quite showdown with McDonald's over.
Yes, some of the planning board members thought it would be a place where teen miscreants would hang out, and one of the teens came and said, "Oh, no, we don't hang out there, we'll hang out down at the river, on the train tracks." At any rate, thank you, Mr. Murphy. To continue, Ms. Dexter, any comments?
I would echo my colleagues at, thanking you for making this investment. I'm, I'm truly excited about this because there's, there's so much potential. It is something that I think the town has been looking forward to for a really long time, so I do thank you. I guess my concern is when you bring it, you know, you're bringing in your first tenant, and, you know, when we've done the, the other shopping centers, including the one that you now own to the south, we have been fairly firm about having at least some kind of design or even if it's as basic as, you know, having a box that says "Future Retail," "Future" whatever, I'd like to hear that you have some kind of idea of who you're trying to bring to this plaza, and, you know, I'm sure you have your wish list. I've, I've heard that you've been trying to get a grocery store to come in, but that the existing building that's there would not, that none of the current companies out there that might want to come into Hyde Park, it doesn't, the footprint and the orientation doesn't map to what they would like. So it seems to me you're, you may end up having to raise that building. And so I guess if you were thinking of doing things like that, I'd like to see that on this plan so that maybe we can, you know, kind of together start to noodle and say, "Well, if you take out the biggest building and then maybe shift, you only have one other tenant, that tenant moves, and all of a sudden you have a much bigger place that maybe you could put a grocery store." I just, it's hard for me to just look at the one building, knowing that there's the entire plaza that needs to be unified, and I think that's my other concern, is by starting with one building, first of all, all of your signs now are going to have to be green and gold, or blue and gold, because we're going to demand sign unity in your plaza. So you've already made your decision, you're make, you're going with blue and yellow. Just putting it out there. These are things that we would talk about if this were a full design. We'd be looking for different types of unity, because it really was built, this came first and then that came, and then they put that one there, and then they put this one here. And I would want to make this the jewel of Hyde Park and make it really, you know, your building that you, the Plaza to the South was done with a lot of care, and it really, it revitalized that plaza. It was, it was an eyesore, and when Mr. Baxter came in and revamped it and did all that, he unified it, he unified that plaza, and obviously, it's doing really well. I want to, I'd love to see something similar done here. So I'm not a big fan of just looking at this one building and saying, "Yeah, that's great, let's do that." I want to, I would like to see something, I want to see something that shows a plan. I know, I know the economy, I know all this, but you've, you've got to have a plan, you own, you own a beautiful piece of prime real estate.
Let me ask a quick technical question before you answer. If the applicants were to show a site plan that removed those buildings and had just generic boxes, let's say, how would I, how would the chair or substitute sign the site plan if those building, if the current buildings were to stay? Could we, could it be phased or something?
Right, the one you would sign wouldn't have, wouldn't be in conflict with the existing conditions.
Okay.
You'd have to have some kind of master design plan, and then what you approve would be, you know, phase one, which shows the, the part being redeveloped along with the existing conditions that are not changing.
I'm just trying to think this that forward, if that were the path, what, how you would, I want to make sure there's a way to sign this without it interfering with anything else.
Right, so my, my, you know, we've all talked about this, and we actually, Anne, it's a good point, and we should talk about it now versus six months from now and have an argument, but we did actually, I met with Owen Rafter from County Planning, and he was good enough to bring two other planners out to the site, so I could also get his input on, you know, they're smart minds and, and see what their thoughts were. And when you go out to the site, it actually, if we could do a field visit, it would be great, because I think sometimes when you're there, you can talk about where the building is and the green space, and everything seems to make sense. So Owen really appreciated coming up and looking at the site. And we had the same conversation with him, is, boy, it would be great if we could come up with a master plan. And I'm a planner, that's what I like to do, I like to plan things. The problem is, and, you know, you said it, and it really is a real issue, is the economy is very different today than it was ten years from now when we all like to plan a center, and you would plan it, and then you could attract the users that were out there. But the supply of tenants is so tough these days that even if I gave you, I could give you six alternative plans, and I could, I could give you a grocery, I could give you a box, I could give you a number of different things, and it could completely change when I get a tenant that comes and says, "I want to do something here." The whole layout could be different. And that's why my suggestion was, and it's, it's a viable legal process, is to approach this thinking that there is another, there, there are other areas of the site that we're going to have to pay attention to. But the driving force in my design and my layout was the access road, that access point, you know, the existing egress that you have, and work from there. So we can focus on this, what I would call the southerly corner of the site, and start to pick items that we think we want to carry on through the site, like lighting and landscaping and different components, maybe we incorporate some stone or something into the site. And, and then I think the money is really great spent on that, and our minds are great spent on that. I want to do a collaborative plan. I really would like to do this differently than the last time and get everyone's comments so that everyone's happy with the plan. I think everyone was happy with the plan, the way it ended up at McDonald's. It took a lot of work to get there, but if we can work together to try to move forward, I could give you an alternative plan, but it would be just simply that. It would be an exercise in showing you an alternative of what you could do there, which is why my preference would be, these are existing buildings. I would love to attract tenants to the existing buildings so that we don't have to raise them. They may not work, they may not work for the tenants that are out there. We may end up doing, you know, sort of a little strip area in the back there. You just, we don't know what's going to come. The ideal would be a grocery store, sure, that would be great. We all know, can, can tell stories about the grocery stores. That would be the best thing in my mind that could come here. So, so I'm, I understand that you want that, and I understand that that's something that's in the code. My expectation was to provide you with a site plan that incorporates those things that we have to look at, which is maintaining that access road and maintaining those existing ingress egress points and trying to work around the Masuda conflicts with her parking and, you know, some of the other site constraints. So that, that's.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I do understand the, the challenge that, that you guys are facing. These are, this is my wish list, you know? And I guess my other concern is, you know, say you decide that you want to make this like eatery cent, eatery central, you want to put a whole bunch of different restaurants and things like that, which would be awesome. You know, would Mavis, would they scare away any of potential customers, you know?
See, I, I don't think it would, but of course, everyone has their own personal preference.
True, yeah, yeah.
So one of the things that.
But this is, this is the danger that you have in just doing.
Right.
One piece.
Right, and.
You put this in and then someone else comes in and goes, "Well, if the Mavis weren't there, boy, I'd love to, you know, bring my business there."
Plenty of clients where I put together a whole site plan on a raw land site, and then you end up, you know, moving things around and changing things.
Right.
I think that it's nice to have mixed uses because then you have connectedness and you have people crossing the street and walking down and eating at McDonald's or going up to CVS to buy something, so that if they can connect, that shouldn't scare anyone away.
Right.
You drop your car off, as long as we together make this building look nice and function well.
Yeah, gotcha. And, and I do agree that the access road and the existing egress and ingress, and if you focus on lighting, landscaping.
Yeah.
Things like that too, which is kind of the overall, gives it an overall feel, and you mentioned the water also, if you can, you know, kind of figure out a way to.
Figure that out, yeah, to get everything just connected.
Come into the 21st century with that.
Yes.
Those are very important from a site plan perspective. So I do agree that.
And it is the corner. I know it's the center of Hyde Park, and we really want to make sure that you guys are proud of this, that you like this.
Right.
This plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
I too will second my colleagues in thanking you guys for making another investment in our town and, and, you know, really what's going to be a huge undertaking at, at some point. I do see the importance of starting with, you know, per se, an anchor tenant and getting some life back into the, to the plaza, but also as a planner, it's, it's tough to really just look at the, the one building because, you know, like Anne's saying, you don't want it to go in, in the wrong spot, but I think it's essential that new life comes into this, into this plaza and, you know, gets people back in here and it might attract new business. But I also think, you know, at some point, if, if the economy turns around and, and it makes sense to build out the whole site, we, we can relook at everything and really come up with a master, you know, we have to see a master plan, but it, it doesn't have to, I, I think, be the staple in getting some life in there. You know, I, I just think that in a perfect world, yeah, would it be nice to see a huge town center built out, but you're talking millions of dollars with no tenants, economically it's tough to do. But again, thank you guys for coming to Hyde Park, and hopefully we can work together and get a good site plan here.
Thank you, Ms. DiNapoli.
This is going to sound like an echo chamber. Sometimes it's the advantage or disadvantage of going last. Yes, it's great that you've come and we greatly appreciate it, but on the other hand, it also comes with a great sense of responsibility that you've taken on, and you have a very heavy burden in purchase of this property, to do right by the property, to do by, right by this town, and most importantly, to do right by the residents of this town that have been waiting a very long time to have this core center of Hyde Park reflect the 21st century that we are presently a quarter of the way almost into. So indirectly, it's my way of saying, also my big concern, that a full site plan, taking in this entity as a whole, you must, when you were purchasing this, have some concept in your mind of what your goals were for this property. No one expends this kind of money with absolutely no plan and no sense of what is going to be coming down the road in the near future, plus the middle and the far future. So to be able to incorporate some of that in a site plan, I would think would be critical. With that being said, part of this is looking at the 21st century, looking at the green space, looking at the aging of our community, and realizing that you have a goldmine here in terms of how all of that can be incorporated. You know, the possible mixed use, redesigning, you need, we need sidewalks, we need lots of green space in the middle. We don't need an asphalt filled of a parking space. Some of that could be redesigned even without knowing what your tenants are to help incorporate a more attractive setting so that you can attract tenants in, in the future. I mean, I really would be most interested in seeing a site plan and hearing your visions and what you are hoping to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, and you're not last, that's me actually, but let me go to the consultants next. Ms. Axelson, I apologize, I saw your email just as I was leaving. Would you like me to go first?
Yeah, go first. This is what I need.
Okay, first, now, Ms. Leibert mentioned the attractiveness of the building, and no one commented on that, so I'll be Dr. Doom tonight. I don't think it looks right. I'll go into the sections of the code why, but I think this is a drab and not that attractive building. Also, in the last application, we saw for this, for Mavis, Ms. Moss ruled that all the teal is part of a sign.
I do remember her talking about that.
So I just want to make sure you know that if that's, if she opined that, you're going to have to get a variance because it's one big huge sign.
Okay.
That's just her. But I think there's too much glass, there's not enough stone. I mean, I can, I will quote sections of the code if you want me to, but because your parcel is adjacent to a parcel that has an historic registered property, as you noticed in the EAF.
Yes.
Different sections of code deal with that. Some say that you, the architecture. Some say that should, the architecture must be, well, one, for historic sites, we're supposed to minimize any adverse impacts on the historic character of such place, and because these are two parcels, it doesn't matter where that, this is the Berg-Stottemberg Building, now the office of Chris Gibson and Sue Torino. Doesn't matter where it's located, the parcels abut, so we have to take that into consideration. New buildings or additions to existing ones reflecting a disformable pattern of window and door openings that is established among adjacent structures. Places listed on the National and State Historic Registers will provide an open space along the property line, a minimum of 100 feet. You can't do that, but these are all things you just need to, I, I will send you my, my list. Consistent architecture, new buildings adjacent to significant historic structures shall be designed in a manner consistent with the general architectural features of such structures in terms of form, materials, fenestration, and roof shape. This doesn't really reflect anything of the Berg-Stottemberg Building. And I know with the application that we had before us, when it was located, it was proposed to be located across from Sweets Funeral Home and Roosevelt Inn, I sent the applicant, a picture of a garage that's located on the Roosevelt Estate, and this was sort of the new version we got, and this, we never moved forward on this, so no, no member of the planning board ever really commented on this last structure. But I'd like to see it include more stone in between the, more flagstone in between the bays. And I think that that would help get me there. I also, it doesn't, I can't tell what the materials are used on the back, but the way our code is defined, the throughway is a street. I can read the section defining street for you if you'd like me to enter into the record, but that qualifies as a street. So you're supposed to provide a front yard on both sides of any building. I don't think that's possible either, but when you were talking about people who dine at McDonald's coming over to sit in the park, or people who drop their car off to have their tires repaired, go to McDonald's, which I think would happen. A lot of people just wait at these sites.
Yeah.
I know from talking to Mr. Goddard, who was the project sponsor back then, he said that a lot of their business is female, and that's why they want to be located inside the town center where it's safe and they can walk over and have some coffee while their tires are changed. I don't see a sidewalk that connects you to McDonald's. The rear, which is the way, how you would normally go, I don't know if that's green space you're proposing now, next to the connector road behind the building, or what, but-
Yeah, this, it would be nice if something, I know I'm on the microphone, but if it went through this green space and connected to that.
There needs to be some sort of sidewalk connection through there. In addition, since that's a street, we're not supposed to allow blank faces to face streets. And I don't think the back of that building is that attractive, so I don't know what you can do, and I don't like fake windows, but I think you need to do something to the rear so that whatever you're going to have ultimately go in the other parcel that would be to the east of Number One, where that empty space is, I think you're going to find a better tenant possibly there, if you just dress up the back of the building, put it that way.
Okay.
My other comments are, we don't have lighting shown yet, but, you know, pedestrian phase, style lighting is going to make a, a big difference. Also, when we're rethinking, I think the parking needs to be improved. When I spoke last to the two site owners, I suggested kind of taking a line, ignoring the other buildings, and taking a line and looking at the parking areas, because our parking code requires that, this is 108-4.5B2J. Any off-street parking for more, 17 or more vehicles, which you have, should provide curved planting islands or beds within the parking area equal in total to 15% of the total square footage of all stalls and driving aisles. Aisles are not included in the calculation you provided on sheet, on sheet SP-2. The total for just the spaces is 24,822 square feet, so there should be about 3,900 square feet of landscaping and islands or beds. Whether that's achievable or not, we can relax these standards, but that is a barren, ugly parking lot right now. And I'd like to think that we can begin to do something for it at this point, whether we go extend it all the way north or just look at the area near south. I heard three different people say they'd like to see a full site plan, meaning some idea of what would happen with the rest of the buildings. I myself, and I'm not the site owner, this is up to you guys, would hate to see each of those existing buildings redeveloped as they are. That's a cockamamie layout that looks stupid. Building four should never face the way it faces. It has no site flow, internal site flow that, that's adequate. I do think you also need to handle some of the cross-access easements. I know that's probably something that the attorney will get into. But looking at that, Mr. Serokas is actually, doesn't have any right of access in his property.
Right, that's correct.
Which is a little-
Nor does Ruth Masuda.
Nor does Ms. Masuda.
Right.
So, again, I don't want to hold you guys up based on this, but we have not been approving sites where we, at any rate, there's some issues there. Also, where the crosswalks are proposed, let me see if I can find the section right here. Like I said, I'll email this to you. But crosswalks are supposed, in sites like this, are supposed to not just be striped, they're supposed to actually have a raised surface to indicate that there's an actual crosswalk there because paint fades, or a kind of brick detail, something, there it is, 108-4.5C1C in any core business district, where if a driveway rally crosses a walkway, special patio accents or textures should be provided to delineate the walkway. I think that that needs to be included here too.
Sure.
And it looks to me as though the sidewalk, oop, goes there and then stops, and there's, there's no way to access walking around this building, am I right?
Correct. That sidewalk needs to carry around the back of the building.
Is that green space that's proposed?
It's just shown as green.
I couldn't quite figure it out, because it, it looks like the road goes right onto the-
Nothing's going to grow there.
Okay. That's why, I think that a sidewalk and maybe some, something to make the back building would make that function better and through there. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that the site is all ugly, but-
Well, it is now. Today it is.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to look great in the future. I, I really do. I know that, that, I've seen what you guys do and it's quality product, so happy to have you here. I just would like to see a little more attention somehow made to make that building fit in better with the character. This doesn't even look like-
Do we have the old plans?
This is the last set we got. It's the same building, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, if you could give us some, some of your stone and the colors and get rid of the teal, but is that the collective-
Colors, colors, colors.
Of the board?
It's on the end, really into color, and that one, you know, doesn't like beige. But, the McDonald's, I think, is a good example, even though it doesn't mimic the Berg-Stottemberg House. It has a residential quality and feel to it. It's got the stone fascia going up. I, I don't want to see every building, you know, look like Disneyland got dropped into Hyde Park. That's not what we're going for. But something that, that better reflects the pattern of new buildings that have been created around here. And again, Hyde Park has a lot of stone, wood, you know, peaked roof, et cetera, gables. Again, this was getting there, but then the application was withdrawn, so we never made it any further. The other sections I think I just want to mention are, we haven't discussed noise impacts. In the last application, we requested a noise impact study, but, and those were primarily going to impact two commercial structures. I just want to put that out there for the board. I'm not sure if it's required here. It's set further back from Route Nine, but we did request that beforehand, so I want to make sure we're not looking at any potential impacts that should be ignored. And that's about it. Like I said, I have a whole, it's like 18 points. Oh, you answered my question about the green space. But on the FEF, FEAF question E1, land uses on and surrounding the project site residential should be checked yes because there's a residential behind.
In the back.
That's all. Small, but, you know, me, I like to point out details. Again, some of these sites that are within, that are in the code, I think because we're, there's a B&amp;B that's, that's, I had an initial offline meeting for a B&amp;B that would be in the former residence. I think it was a teacher, this is the space that's between
Regina Chelle.
Hyde Park Elementary and Regina Chelle, and because Hyde Park L is also in the National Registry, I went through the same details and said, some of these you probably can't do, but they need to be in here for wire relaxing, you know, understand that, or requesting a waiver of whatever.
Okay.
So I have all those details in there.
Do you want us to formally request a waiver for each and every one of those items?
No, you can just request a, a whole bunch of them, or say why you can't, provide a narrative why it can't be met, like I said. You're actually increasing the open space that's between the two sites, so that's actually good, but if you did 100 feet, the building wouldn't, there'd be a little bitty building there for two, you know, bays, so.
But you should identify each individual.
It'll help, I think it'll help once I email you, like I said,
Okay, thank you.
my analysis here, it'll help, so. Let me go over to the consultants. Ms. Axelson, do you want to begin? I'm sorry, I was speaking so fast, I saw you writing and writing. I'm, I'm done, I'm done.
I am, and thank you, because I, I've got five pages already.
Whoa.
And, well, you know, I, I write big letters. Anyways, so just, I just want to quickly ditto some of the things, of course, I'm thinking concept plan for the whole site. Broad brush that 50,000, you know, level type thing with phasing, going piece by piece, but also to avoid making this a piecemeal development. I-
So, just so I'm clear, so you're suggesting doing an alternative concept plan, that's what-
That's what I'm thinking.
I wouldn't say alternative, but a concept, I mean, a site plan for the site, but that would be, you could just say, future phases, for us to have an idea of what's going to happen on the other side. I believe that there might already be some plans that reflect the potential future, when you said strip center. Those could be shown ju, just, I guess, to help the planning board have an idea of where we're going with this. But with the idea that that's, we wouldn't be nailing their feet to the cro-
And that's my-
Let me rephrase that.
Yeah, I know.
That, that you wouldn't be putting concrete boots on you for this. This would just be conceptual.
My concern though is, is on Seeker, is I don't want to then be forced to address all of the impacts associated with a use of a building, and that's why I keep saying an alternative.
Right, although if you're showing just general boxes, I mean, you would just do worst-case retail, and because this is an existing-
It's already fully developed, yeah.
You'd just be giving us the numbers.
Okay.
I don't think that, like I said, I, I want to, I don't want to avoid a traffic study or impact assessment.
Right, but you're not changing the access.
You're not changing the access points. It's on a state highway, and, and the third most traveled road in Hyde Park is Pine Woods. I know from the numbers. People use it as a shortcut, as you know, you grew up here.
I know.
So, you, there's, you also have the existing crossway or the throughway that goes out to a light, another light, so there's two light points actually, kind of both sites to utilize, so I, I just, I don't want to get in too far, because if we, if we say, show us what you're going to do, and then that somehow triggers stormwater changes, et cetera.
That's what I'm concerned about.
It's, that really wouldn't be warranted, because they don't really have an idea of what they're doing there yet.
And for everyone to focus on that, because it's, it, I hate to say, it's pie in the sky. I'm going to give you some alternatives of what we could do with the existing site, and then, again, it could potentially change, which is why I'm pushing a little bit.
An example would be, you don't see a lot of malls proposed right now, where they would build a big mall and then just look for anchor tenants, because those tenants, to quote Ms. Leibert, are kind of, the supply is, you know, trickle down from what it used to be.
But that's where I also made the comment, and I must give Ms. Kane credit for the thought of a multi-use area also as an alternative for the site, as something that might be something that can be pursued, because people are not using malls and big strip malls like this. So if there is a conceivable possibility in the foreseeable future for a mixed-use entity, it will help plan around.
I interrupted you.
No.
Please continue.
It's fine, I mean, this, this is, it's kind of exciting to be part of this process and have the planning board with their ideas. You guys live here. You're going to have to live with this.
Not have to live with it, we're going to enjoy living with it.
Enjoy living by it. So, so, yeah, I, I think it's possible to do a conceptual plan. We emphasize that this is a site redevelopment, so, you know, everything that Michael's talking about.
So, if we do, so we're all in agreement, if we do an alternative plan, it's simply an alternative plan for layout only. Not to address Seeker impact.
I would have called it a conceptual master plan, and I would think that you, that's all you're going to do, is call it a conceptual master plan, that the planning board would use to guide their look at the site plan for the specific aspect that you're developing it.
What, what would happen is, is that we would, this would, by not doing Seeker on a fully developed site, it means that every time you come back in, we'd have to redo Seeker on whatever the changes are. To the extent there is any Seeker work done, it just means we'd have to take a look at it.
I think, whether you call it the conceptual plan like Liz is talking about, I think we're still going to-
Microphone.
To avoid segmentation, we're going to recommend that you just give us the preliminary numbers for the whole site, whatever that can, concept is, and then it can be amended as you amend your plan in the future.
But we're not going to look at traffic and all the impacts associated with that master plan, because it's, it's a sort of useless effort. We have no idea what's going to occur.
Right, I mean, I think we can, we can talk about this more, but-
You could just do generic ITE for retail.
ITE numbers.
And that's fine, if we're at that, if we're all agreeing that we're at that level.
Yeah, I don't think, well, I don't want to commission a study on-
Yeah, I don't-
Very conceptual.
Yes.
You don't want to spend a lot of money on landscaping.
On a cloud that has a box.
I think one way of handling a conceptual master plan and dealing with Seeker would be to come up with some approximate numbers and come up with thresholds that are comfortable for the applicant. I mean, the town center historic district, the verbiage in the purpose of the district talks about intensity and density and mixed use. And I would think that if a developer is going to redevelop a site like this, that you might want to attempt to, in the long run, maximize your gross leasable area. I mean, with the understanding that there's an issue with water and sewer. But again, this is long-run planning. But the town, in looking at Seeker, also has to balance the social and economic benefits with the economic impacts, so just for example, when I started drafting up my thoughts on this, the first thing that came to mind, which maybe hasn't occurred to you, or maybe it has, was that one thing that really helps businesses survive is to have people around that are walking around, spending money, eating, buying things, using services, et cetera. In other words, people are part of what's going to charge the success of this site. And so one idea that I had was the possibility of apartments somewhere on the site. And I'm aware that a lot of commercial and retail developers don't like to put apartments over the store. But it is possible. It's also possible to redesign part of the site that would be apartments with stores on the bottom, and then, you know, stores nearby. So, I guess I look at, if the planning board's going to be looking at a site plan for a portion of the site, the concept plan would at least begin to paint the various systems such as access, lighting, signage, pedestrian pathways, landscaping, green spaces, so that the planning board can support it by seeing that this little corner is going to fit in the greater whole, and then we put in verbiage and thresholds to protect, you know, from doing it a piece at a time.
Let me make this suggestion. So one of the things that, you know, we would love to be able to put apartments here. I mean, I think that would be fantastic. But, as we all know, there's no sewer. So, the biggest hurdle that we have behind the scenes in marketing different tenants, would we love this to be restaurant row? Absolutely, but there's no sewer. So, one of the things, let, let me make this suggestion then and see if everyone agrees to this. So, what if I give you the site plan as it exists today? So we'll give you an existing conditions, and we'll give you one or two alternatives, concept layouts, that could occur using this building, you know, the way that we're proposing. Maybe it's one big box, maybe it's a couple of small boxes, maybe it's, you know, one big grocery store. But we'll sort of gray those down a little bit on the site plan, so everyone understands from a Seeker perspective, from a master plan, from an impacts, that those are shown for, this is what we could do. These are some of the alternatives that we could do with building configurations using the existing site, not necessarily talk about the uses, but we'll talk about boxes and access, sidewalk, and so forth.
Beware of getting everybody too excited when we see those.
I'm sorry?
Beware of getting everybody too excited when we see those.
Well, I hope you do, but I don't want to focus too much time on the tree or the sidewalk or whatever, on the concepts, but just so everyone can have a vision of what could occur. Does that work, Liz?
Yes, for, I'm just going, just for example, if you're doing a concept plan and then you've got a corner you're developing, you might have a landscape plan and a concept, but you might show a system of landscaped areas that are just blobs. You're not-
Yes, that's fine, we won't put planting.
You're not going to put planting in the rest of the site. You're going to put landscape blobs, that kind of thing.
And that'll make that works.
Potential plaza, for example, in the middle.
Okay.
And let's just, to, to piggyback on what Ms. Leibert was saying, not only is there no commercial sewer system here, there's also not a discharge point if you want to put in a big package plant.
Correct.
I mean, even though, in my opinion, it goes into a stream, this stormwater system that operates, operated by DOT is a man-made stream.
Saying this.
But DOT has control over that, not us, and the town board has been pursuing this, and they're going, they're talking to people at the state level now, but it's very slow process for change to occur, particularly amongst the state bureaucracy, and I don't mean that to all the fine employees of the DOT. Isn't that anything else, Ms. Axelson? I know you have a memo that you'll be sending out.
Yeah, I, it was easier for me to write it down.
Okay.
And that way I don't have to read my handwriting. So, I, I did have a few specifics. One thing was the possibility of, is there, did you look at any other building on the site for Mavis?
Yes, and this is where we are in agreement with them on, so we do have a signed lease, you know, I know everyone hates to hear that, but this is the plan. This is the building that they are choosing, that they're proposing. And so any other building on the site is not a viable alternative for them.
Right, and then, let's see. I didn't really get into the EAF because I felt it was premature, but I-
I did such a good job.
I know, I'm sorry.
I only found one error.
Didn't even- Didn't even look. Just reiterating, noise study would be needed, and another thing, I think, we're going to want to look at visual rendering, some kind of illustration of how the Mavis is going to look in the context of things. And the other thing that I.
You mean in the context of the existing buildings that are there?
Yeah.
The adjoining buildings.
Yeah, I think the planning board needs to look at that, to at least consider community character, architecture, that kind of thing.
Architecture's always a big issue here. I also, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention something earlier. This is something Ms. Moss, Ms. Palladaro, and you guys will have to work out, but the use has lapsed. The former Grand Union slash Amish Market has been sitting empty for five years or so, and I don't know how long Malloy Pharmacy's been empty, but it's, the use laps, both the uses lapsed. Now, colleagues, if you recall, when Hobo came before us to become an assisted living facility, because the use had lapsed and the maximum allowable square footage in that district was 7,500 square feet, they had to go to the ZBA to get an area variance, to utilize the original footprint. I don't, because the maximum is 65,000 square feet in this, and those, even though those uses have lapsed, I don't think you have to get any kind of, anything for this, because. It says the variance, a microphone, microphone.
It was for the setback, I think. Yeah, one of my questions was the scale and the existing conditions, to go over that with you and Tad.
Right, the scale covers the site, so it's parking and buildings, and this definitely exceeds it, especially because all the buildings are empty, so they've lost that grandfathered status. So that's another reason to do a master plan at this point, because otherwise you're going to be getting, asking for very large variance for scale.
Because of the existing buildings.
But you can go up to 65,000.
Yeah.
So right now, if you take out buildings two and four, or rather, take out two and one, then the scale would be the parkings plus the building that is occupied, Building Three, and I don't think Building Four has been empty over a year. I could be wrong.
Well, the other piece of it is trying to allocate which parking goes with the other buildings.
Yes. Can I do an offline?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I prefer for you guys to work.
So we can get that resolved.
Yeah, well, I discussed it with Ms. Moss, and it was becoming spider-webby in my head, so. Pushing it back over to you guys.
I, I had a question about this, just for my own. For this concept, is it basically they're taking what's there, how, how much septic they could generate, how much traffic they might generate, how much parking they might generate on the existing site with what is available, which would tell you, well, you can't do a restaurant row because there's limitations in the septic. They can't do certain things, so it would basically be general retail.
Well, that's why I was going to show boxes and not uses.
Right.
So we don't know what the uses will be, but I'm actually looking at the land and the property boundaries and the access points, and coming up with where could you place buildings?
Okay.
That could, and then connecting them, so I'm going to figure out. So that's what I was going to show, but no uses. We would just assume whatever the uses are, we would have to work within.
Okay, just trying to clarify in my head how that works. Thank you.
If that, I think that's the best approach that addresses.
And I mean, just going along with what Ann's saying, I would think that if you're going to put money into developing a site, you would want to maximize the value you're getting out of it.
Well, sure, but it'd be driven by sewer, yeah.
Of course, of course. Of course. One quick thing that's not clear to me on scale. What happens if you go up? In other words, if you, if you look at this existing site and maybe the existing footprints plus the existing number of parking spaces is close on scale, but if you, say, factor in shared parking, and then you maybe reduce a few footprints and go up, does the second floor.
Count, yes.
Count against you?
Yes, it does. It's in the code. Every floor counts for square, total square footage of a site. At some, Ms. Moss determines it. So.
But it's really, it's per building, but it's the whole site because the parking is shared. So that's where it gets a little tricky.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm, I'm looking at the purpose of the Town Center Historic District and thinking that there could potentially be some incentive to go up with a shared parking scenario and increase the gross leasable area on the site. But if scale is going to create some kind of odd disincentive, or, maybe I'm not understanding.
Without the microphone.
I'm not understanding scale as well as issue.
The purpose of the scale limitation is to prevent a big-box store from coming in, basically. It's a big-box restriction because you can't have.
I'm not sure that needs to be stated for the record.
Well, I mean, that's, that's how it, that's, that's what it is. It prevents.
I'm just teasing.
Maximum coverage, yeah.
Yes, maximum coverage.
Right, it's a reverse way of looking at it.
Let's rephrase that to say that huge buildings would be out of character for the community, as it exists now.
But Liz, just back to your comment, is that all of those things we would love to do, which is why we don't want to get bogged down on some of the uses when we show the boxes, because that would drive the utilities and some of the other impact.
You know, and I am happy to point out that the town of Hyde Park received the first-ever $500,000 grant from the Partnership for Manageable Growth from the county. They finally funded the other half of it. Part of that is used for purchase of open space and passive recreation open space, as well as farmland protection. The, when Mr., County Executive Steinhaus started this program, they never funded the infrastructure part, and they now have it a million, and Hyde Park got 500,000. So we're, the town board is trying to cobble together enough money to, at some point, create a sewer district. But everyone knows that if we had a functioning sewer system and the site was a little bit larger, you could put apartments back there. But right now, without sewer, with no discharge point, that seems, close location, it's a big challenge. So, I mean, that's, that's really, let's be honest, that's what's been holding back our community for a long time, is the lack of commercial sewer. It prevents you from going up higher, all sorts of issues, so, but those are, those are good points, and I, that's, that's the purpose of a workshop discussion like this, is to get everything out on the table and think about what we're dreaming about and hoping that you guys could do one day. But we recognize that there are restraints just caused by the lack of infrastructure, so. Do you want, anything else?
Those are my broad brush.
Those are my broad brush points.
Thank you. Ms. Palladaro, any comments?
Just as we go through the process, you know, right now I'm noticing access issues, parking issues, easements, and those sorts of things. We'll work out as we go through.
Well, we have full access onto our site.
They do.
And let's keep in mind that these parcels were created, I believe, Mr. Chairman, by a court-ordered.
One parcel was created by, excuse me, two parcels were created by court order. I'm not really sure that Ms. Masouda's was created by court order. She already filed, she'd already done, somehow made that subdivision happen. I don't know how.
We have access. We have access to our property. I can't control what the other properties are going to agree and not agree to, so I just don't want to hold up our application.
Right, I would just like to, some clarification of what rights, if any, the other property owners have in your property as far as perhaps easements or.
There are zero today.
Exactly right.
Yeah, there's none.
There are none. We had, the, Mr. Sorocas came before us for site plan, and that's when we discovered that if the owners wanted to, they could put up a wall and prevent all that parking area from back there from being utilized. There seems to, I guess in the old days, it was, hi.
Yeah.
Well, no, in the old days, they accessed right out to Pine Woods Road.
Oh, that it was sealed off, okay.
And then they, they made that opposite the medical thing.
It's not directly opposite.
Which caused its own problem.
It's not directly opposite, and that's where there are lots of accidents and through there, yeah.
With it, but that's why, that curb, that fence was never there.
Right.
If you could stand up and do the Vanna thing and show us what's the general flow of traffic that you envision initially and in the long run.
For pedestrian traffic or for vehicular?
Vehicular, vehicular.
Well, currently, this is an in, egress only, so there's a left-in and a right-in that you can come into the site. I would imagine that people can park in this area. This might be where cars are being serviced immediately, or anticipating that people are going to park in this area. I don't envision that there would be potentially a building on top of that lot, because that's where the seepage pits are. So unless we.
Have to be closer.
Closer.
Right on, yeah.
Point where we are into a sewer system and we can remove those seepage pits, this is going to remain as parking. So to Mr. Chairman's point, I believe that we do need to make some illustrations on the plan showing how we would get pedestrians from those parking spaces and how they're more properly aligned to one another into the proposed tenant space.
But it basically.
It looks like we're talking about coming in nine and eventually going out Pine Woods.
Or.
Or where people can go.
Or the other way.
Yes, okay.
And that'll bring you to another signalized intersection to go south on Route Nine.
Shop me.
Got it.
Oh.
Does this stop working?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on it.
We have batteries.
We have batteries here.
Yeah, I know we do.
Okay, back to Ms. Palladaro, any other comments? I know that was a very broad brush about, okay. So I took a lot of notes myself, but to summarize, I think that pedestrian movement around here so that you can indeed connect to the uses on the southern, Town Center South, I guess I'll call it now. There are a lot of details we haven't seen, but again, this wasn't the purpose for this. I think we've agreed, it appears, that there will be some sort of alternative concept plan shown, but that that's, that will have just some generic numbers for, i.e. retail or office, whatever. And that's good because, as I said, there were three members who wanted to see a full site plan. No one else seems to be criticizing the architecture. Did anybody have any opinion about the architecture other than me?
No, I, I agreed with your point.
Yeah, I just thought it was premature.
Italy ball.
Well, I don't want this, to, to, to mean, no one to say anything and then say, wait, you all said by, by silence, you acquiesced.
Yeah.
Yeah, the architecture could use some.
So cohesively, so I hear, if I am correct, is some more compon, oh, that's not proper English. Some components that bring the building more closely to some of the other buildings in the area. Some stone.
The attractive ones.
Right.
Yes, okay.
Not the other ones on your side.
Like you're right next door to the historic Carriage House, the Rogers Historic Carriage House is right next door. So you could play off that.
Okay.
Yeah, I should add, that was the balance, when we did McDonald's, we were looking at both historic, the, right. No, this McDonald's, we were looking at both the Carriage House, because that was the, that was the Stables for the Rogers Estate. And then we were looking at Bergs, Stottemberg, so that's why there's stone as well as wood.
Correct, yeah, we incorporated both those two.
So it's a matter of just continuing kind of that, that style over. And like I said, the rest, there are points that, because you're located next to an historic site, and it's funny, you have, the other site didn't need that much because you've got so much open space already. You have a lot of open space on the other site.
Right.
And it was contained within the site, so that didn't come up. Now this is an adjacent parcel. So as I said, just to make sure we treat everybody paritively, I'll email you all those points. One other question I forgot to ask was, what is the blue-stripped area around the existing building on SP One? It's, on my site plan, it's, there's a bunch of little blue hashed, can you see it down here?
I don't know. I know what you mean.
I couldn't figure what that was.
I'm just going to put it back.
Okay.
I don't know what it is.
Mr. Berger did not have a legend there that I could figure out.
Yeah.
All right, so are there any other questions you have of the board?
I don't believe so. I'm, I'm hoping that our next meeting, we can provide you with some answers to your questions in a more complete drawing set, and then hopefully we can forward something to County Planning.
So we'll make a full site plan application next, right.
Put that in and start that, that circulation process.
That's great. Does this require referral to DOT? I'm just wondering, they're not proposing any changes to the ingress or egress points.
That isn't interested.
Okay, fine. I was just trying to think in advance of what agencies, besides County Planning, because it's on a state highway.
Yes, correct, and it's on, I think it's wholly on the property. I have to look at the, the survey, but there's no changes to that.
Actually, there might.
There might be a tie-in there on the corner, right there.
And I think you're proposing a new sidewalk there, am I right?
Correct, yeah, and it's tied into that existing one.
That might require, I don't care, I've got, I haven't walked that site in a long time, since Amish Market was there, to be honest with you, so. That was one question, I'm sorry, I could, you couldn't answer, but that's okay. The rest.
You didn't go visit Mr. Grumpy?
No, I did not miss the, sorry, I forgot about that. And I personally would, like I said, I'd like to see some improvements, at least in this parking, something that's going to get, get us going, that'll make this more visually attractive. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about how it would help you to attract more tenants in the future as well by getting started on what we need to do. Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Because, you know, I, they've all heard me say this, being from the south, if there is one tree in a parking lot, I will be there. I don't care how far it is from the building, because when I go back in the summer, I want my car to be cool. I can't stand the heat.
It helps.
And right now, all that parking area, they've got some wimpy old trees that provide nothing, so. It could be made more attractive, and like I said, I don't think we need to focus about all of the rest right now, but have an idea of where we would be going as a sort of paradigm to begin down in this area. So I don't have anything else. Anybody else want to conclude? Thank you all, thanks, everybody. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
And we'll wait to see your formal application.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, because we all said it, and I didn't get a chance to be part of the echo chamber. Thank you again for investing, and we're happy to have you come back and reactivate the site. The next item on the agenda is Malkarni Professional Center. This is a site plan for a change of use, as well as site permit and relocation. Ms. Moss recommended a waiver of the public hearing, and, Yvonne, you're back, thank you. I thought you couldn't make it tonight.
Me too.
So we have a resolution prepared. We got notice from the county, from County Planning, saying that this would be an opportunity to add landscaping, remove asphalt. I spoke with, ahem, I spoke with Ms. Levornway at County Planning today, and once I told her that, or rather, yesterday, once I explained that the town has the TAP grant, the Transportation Assistance Program, and that Ms. Moss and I have already been working on it, where there'll be a sidewalk and new landscaping added. And we weren't requiring this because we would make them put a sidewalk where we don't even know where it's going yet, because that's still part of the design process. She said, I forgot about that, you're right. So we're all okay.
Great.
Anything you want to add?
No, I am grateful for getting a decision.
Okay, who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution to approve an amended site plan, Malkarni Professional Center, March 2nd, 2016, Resolution Number 16-3. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby waives the requirements of 108-9.4 as the proposed amendments are minor in nature. Be it further resolved that the planning board makes the following findings with respect to the requested modifications of the site development standards. One, the site is already developed and the applicant is making minimal changes to the exterior of the structure. The town has received a grant to install a sidewalk, is in the process of completing a final design before requesting proposals from contractors, and will begin construction by 2017. Two, there are no potential adverse impacts to surrounding properties from the elimination of the sidewalk or modifications, or modification of site development standards. The town will be installing a sidewalk at the site and others south to create, quote, "a complete street," quote. The existing lighting and parking lot are not being modified, other than where the sign will be relocated and will remain in the existing condition. Be it further resolved that based on the above findings and the criteria set forth in the town code at Section 108-4.5, the board hereby modifies the lighting standards set forth in Section 108-4.5 H2 of the zoning law to permit the site plan as proposed. Be it further resolved that the site plan be revised to reflect that all asphalt in the former parking stall, where the new sign will be located, be removed in a mix of daylilies, end quote, knockout, end quote. Landscape roses be installed around the sign in a manner acceptable to the zoning administrator. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants approval to the site plan and authorizes the chair to sign the plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Be it further res, that was it. Be it further resolved that the planning board recommends the zoning administrator issues a sign permit for the sign elevation as depicted on the approved site.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it was a pleasure to do business with you, and good luck getting your tenant in now. You just need to revise the site plan to show that there'll be landscaping around, and a note that says, that one sheet, a note that will say all asphalt will be removed in the nine-by-18 parking space?
Yes.
That's it, then I can sign.
All right, all right, we'll do so.
Whoop, 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 remember?
Who turned it down? Mrs. Knapp can send you a final resolution, so you have the exact language.
All right, and then I can put it on the drawings and bring it. No problem. Thank you very much. May I ask, what's the duration of... I know there is some time to do this.
Actually, you just need to change the plan to show that condition, then you submit that to TAD. And when we make certain that there's enough escrow to cover final bills, and that's it.
Okay.
You can get your building permit, or whatever you need. You don't need a building permit, do you?
Not that I know of. It was just a sign permit, and there was the change of use, which I don't think...
Call TAD tomorrow if you don't mind, because I don't think that should be a big deal.
All right.
All righty?
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure working with you. Look forward to seeing you again.
Very well, thank you.
You don't need a building permit for the sign? I thought you did.
That's why I said, I don't know if they will or not. I think so, but that's...
It's gonna be putting in post, correct?
Right.
They may, yeah.
It depends. So, but TAD can answer that question better than I can.
I'll talk to her tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
The next item on the agenda is Speedway. Mr. Alexander, looking tan and fit.
You guys are singing. I'm seeing memories after listening to the conversation about the town center.
Please don't.
We won't talk about Hannaford or ShopRite or things like that. For those of you who I haven't met before, my name's Neil Alexander. I'm a partner at the law firm of Cuddy and Fader here, and on behalf of Speedway, I think presumptively to talk about the area variance application we submitted in recommendations.
The recommendation's already been written. It was authorized at the last meeting. I see Mr. Lob, who seemed very efficient at the time, was not so efficient in informing you of all our activities last time. You already had the resolution. I know because I read through your packet that was sent to the ZBA, so you know that. So we have the recommendation letter. I was already authorized. I just asked already to take a look at it beforehand. But it'll be sent off tomorrow morning.
Wonderful.
And we don't have a site plan amendment application yet, so...
That's correct. We... And keep going, I'm sorry.
No, no, we don't have a site plan application amendment, because according to Mr. Lob, you guys were going to discuss with the applicant whether you wanted to keep an ice machine, a propane tank exchange, something or other, as part of the site plan. But the site plan amendment would also show the change of colors to the structure.
The air station.
No, there is no kiosk, as far as I know.
There was an air vent, and I...
There was an initial plan where there was a kiosk that was going to be out amongst the fueling tanks, but that went away. So it's not part of... We don't have an application yet, so if you want a kiosk there, then we should know about that. But that seemed to have gone away a while, like nine months or so ago. So it's just the elements that are there that are unapproved.
Yep.
That need to be shown. So... And you are welcome to start the site plan application process while you... I think you already made your application to the ZBA?
We made our application because we didn't want to get out... Yeah. You're implicitly understanding my timing issue. So I hear you on these three elements. I think we need to make a phone call up to our friends at Land Resource Consultants, who did the plan last time around, and get that straightened out. I think that's probably our best move. My understanding and hope, and I'm looking over there, is that we'll probably be on the agenda for the ZBA on the 23rd. I think we were timely enough by getting it in.
Donna won't know that.
Yesterday, but she won't know until she has her meeting, but I think that was our...
Donna's not the secretary to the Z... There's any more appeals. That's Linda Weiner.
Oh, wow, it's changed enough times. I'm like, sorry, I'm on a decade.
Lorraine retired.
I might add, Donna was gone for five months.
Lorraine retired.
Yeah, Lorraine's retired. It's Linda Weiner now. You were gone, you weren't here...
I disappeared.
For the rest of the board who hasn't met Mr. Alexander before, yeah. When he said I anticipated him, it's because we worked a lot together, so... But he didn't... We didn't... We slowed down.
But it sounds like you have a great start. It's good to see Nick and Nick, and I won't talk about subjects in which I'm not retained. But it's good to see... It was good to see them.
If you'd like a copy of the recommendation letter, you can have mine.
That'd be great, thank you. And then I hear you on that. We need to get that going, and we'll try and do that between now and the end of the month.
It's okay. I mean...
It's on our... I know, it's our time. We're the one who's right.
Right.
Understood.
It's just up to... I actually was surprised you were here. I thought, ah, he is here for Speedway, so...
Yeah, you know, I was. I was. And as you said, it sounds like our handoff wasn't as seamless as it could have been.
And we didn't have an issue with the signs as proposed. We didn't take a position on the freestanding sign.
Okay, the eight extra square feet that was inadvertent, yeah.
It's up to them to figure that out, so... But otherwise, we recommend it positively for it.
Thank you. We appreciate all that.
Actually, it was very easy to do for us, because you're actually reducing overall the size and scope of the signage, so...
It's always been an interesting code.
I mean...
I remember when we were doing Hess on this, I think I came back and forth between the two boards to keep getting renewals.
Yeah.
Because one was lapsing over the other, because during the boom era, everything got tightened down.
It's true. I missed that boom era. I missed that boom era. Here, you can have it right here. It's good to see you and have a safe drive back, as always.
A pleasure.
Looking forward to see you again.
Bye.
The next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Condominium Association Wastewater Treatment Facility. This is the... Well, you know, they're condominiums. They're located at 4676 Albany Post Road, across from Ledgewood. What happened is, is that the... There was a delay in the applicant in finding a contractor to redo the treatment facility. So they need an extension of site plan, and it requires a public hearing by state law. So I'm going to motion to set the public hearing for April 6th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, can we do this before... Can we do this at the next March meeting?
The public hearing?
Yeah.
If there's enough time to notice it?
Do we have enough time to notice it? Uh-oh, is that too much for you?
I think it's an extra week in here, too.
No, this would be in two weeks.
This would be in two weeks. There's an extra week in March.
I'll have to get it out Friday, but...
Let's go ahead and keep it at April 6th. They're not in a rush.
Yeah, apparently not.
No, no.
It's a timely request.
It's a timely request, so we're fine.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda are the Sheldon, seeking a site plan waiver for a two-story addition to a residential home located at South Road, I believe.
28 South Drive.
28 South Drive. That's right. South Road would be Route 9 in Poughkeepsie. Sorry about that. Mr. Sheldon was before us before. If you recall, he needed to get some waivers for areas that were going into the setbacks. I mean, waivers, area variances. At the time, we made a waiver for the portion of the property that was not requiring a waiver. In the interim, he got his variances in the ZBA, and I told Mr. Sheldon he did not have to come, but they came anyway, just because they liked...
We're here for the entertainment value.
Missy, save it.
Which I appreciate.
It's too cold and too dark to work outside.
Is there anything you'd like to add? Because we're ready to take action. We have the recommendation from the zoning administrator. We're ready to pass.
No, we're just happy to get the waiver.
Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Sheldon Residence, 28 South Drive, Resolution Number 16-16. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Perry Sheldon on... There's no date. For property located at...
To be filled in later.
Okay. For property located 28 South Drive in the Town of Hyde Park, and whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the addition and changes shown on the building plan submitted to the Building Department in the file entitled Sheldon Residence, 28 South Drive. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
And this, I think it normally takes like till Friday to get your building permit for the next section, but that's how long it usually takes.
We're in good shape.
Okay, good. You already know. Right. The site's looking good. I drove by.
Yeah, we're making good progress. Actually, started a foundation this week.
I keep looking for you, my new neighbor, and I don't see you.
You don't see? I'm there. Down the ditch? I've got... Yeah, I've been down in the ditch, and you know, everybody else comes walking through, and so I've...
I'll have to start walking through then.
We're actually thinking maybe putting a bench.
For that neighborhood, that's a very walk... People walk there all the time. Yeah, well, that's walkable. It's nice.
Yeah.
Because of the day job.
Yeah, I do.
Maybe you can say a lemonade stand afterwards, too, there by your bench. Thank you very much.
Good night.
The next item on the agenda is fixed tech repair. If you recall, we discussed this last time with the applicant, his representative. I had the opportunity to stop in and meet the young couple. They're actually sort of already operating.
Oh, wow.
There... I mean, it's... It's not much there, but they do repair cell phones, computers, screens, like the glass. They do a lot. And they're excited to be here, and it was nice to welcome them along, so... Who has this resolution?
That'd be here.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution Number 16-10. Whereas, whereas, whereas...
Wait, wrong... Eh, 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 eh. That's not right. This is the wrong resolution.
Oh, sorry. How can I not know?
Wrong resolution.
Is that wrong?
This is the resolution that was written for the last meeting, and I redid this resolution.
Okay.
I sent it to you today. Yes. Sorry, it was the first one I sent, or the second one I sent. No, first one I sent. Sorry about that. While we're waiting for the proper resolution, let's go to Shoals. Applicants are seeking a site plan waiver. They are visible from the river. They're on the river.
Oh.
This is a site...
Oh, yes. Right, I looked it up. I was...
Penny Lane is not a town road. Penny Lane is a private road. This road is a... This is... To access this, they must go onto the property of the Locusts, owned by Andre Belash. And so what happened was, was this was Mrs. Astor... This was Mrs. Astor's house, Mrs. Vincent Astor's house originally. And when it went out of the family and was sold the first time, a small area and a house that's built in the 1860s from the water was given to a relative, and it stayed within the family. And so the generator, even the site is visible from the river, the generator will not be. It's located behind the house, so we have a recommendation. But it's a pretty cool house. You can't... Yeah. It's sometimes visible from the Mills Mansion. If you go to the edge of the property when it's leaf-off season, you can see. If you're on the river, you really have to look, because it's tucked into a little cove. But it's a pretty cool place. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Resolution 16-6 of March 2nd, 2016. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the file entitled Shoals Generator regarding the specific request as submitted on January 13th, 2016, and in the building permit application file dated December 16th, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. And now we can go back to fixed tech repair.
Are we going to retain the number there, are we?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. Resolution Number 16-10. Lot more wherasses. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board makes the following findings with respect to the requested bonus to permit a maximum letter and symbol height of 14 inches for upper half of the sign reading "fixed," and 10 inches for the lower half reading "tech repair." Number one, additional size of the symbols and letters is appropriate given the sign's distance from the road. The wall sign will be located approximately 240 feet back from the site's primary access roadway. Two, the increase in size is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the sign is being placed. Be it further resolved that the board hereby grants the applicant requested sign bonuses to permit a maximum letter and symbol height of 14 and 10 inches respectively, as shown on the sign elevations submitted by GNS dated June 27th, 2014, last revised 1/28/2016. Option number one, and recommends that the zoning administrator sign the sign permit for the proposed sign as shown on the sign elevations, provided that the zoning administrator ensure that the lighting proposed, which is a critical component of the design unity at this site, is white and not red, as illustrated in the sign elevations.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to go back over this, as we discussed, you all can see this. I don't think Mr. Sweet, the camera can. But for some reason, she didn't know why, this is shown as a red backdrop instead of white.
Yeah, I remember that.
So I spoke to Ms. Forrest, who, by the way, really did step down like three days after our meeting, retired. But she said that it would definitely be white, and I said, well, it's going to be in the resolutions for it, that it has to be white, or TAD can't give it. So that noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Did everyone have a chance to read the August 19th minutes?
Yes.
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 And Ms. Dexter caught that there were no resolutions inserted. That's because I just sent over any edits that I had put in through. Thank you, so...
And there was no listing of who was present that night.
It didn't in the version that we saw, because we saw just Mary Zabo's version, which you dressed it up to insert the resolutions. Yeah, in other words, we... I sent it just from me. I didn't have you send it around, so if you want to see the final version, which we also don't see the table of contents, et cetera, it's all done like this. So may I get a motion to approve the August 19th minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Last item on the agenda. I have a resolution that I'd like to read. This is Resolution Dash 16 Point C, March 2nd, 2016. A resolution committing the services provided by Ann Marie Hampson and Mary Zabo. Whereas Donna Knapp, Secretary of the Planning Board of the Town of Hyde Park, was unable to fulfill her duties owing to medical issues beginning September 2015 and returned in February 2016. And whereas, those duties include attending and recording planning board meetings, managing correspondence from consultants, applicants representatives, board members, and outside agencies, seeing notice of public hearings, advertising public hearings, and posting notices and referring applications to state and county agencies, among other tasks. And whereas, Ann Marie Hampson, who is the Assistant to the Zoning Administrator, and his duties are entirely separate and distinct from those of the Secretary of the Planning... To the Planning Board. And whereas, Mary Zabo, who is the Secretary to the Supervisor of the Town of Hyde Park, and whose duties are entirely separate and distinct from those of the Secretary to the Planning Board. And whereas, Ms. Hampson assumed the duties of the Secretary to the Planning Board while Ms. Knapp was on leave, and without prior training served with distinction and made the temporary transition seamless. And whereas, Ms. Zabo volunteered to assume a specific duty of the Secretary to the Planning Board, the verbatim compilation of the minutes of several meetings, which task is one of the most challenging and time-consuming of the Planning Board Secretary's responsibility. And whereas, Ms. Zabo has volunteered to continue transposing the minutes of the Planning Board of the Town of Hyde Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board recognizes and commands Ann Marie Hampson and Mary Zabo for their unwavering and devoted service to the Hyde Park Planning Board, as well as to the residents of the town. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board hereby extends its appreciation to Ms. Hampson and Ms. Zabo for their dedication and commitment and directs its secretary to forward copies of this resolution to Ann Marie Hampson, Mary Zabo, Supervisor Aileen Rohr, and the Town Board, of which Councilman David Ray is here tonight, and to Sandy Bruno, Personnel Assistant to the Town of Hyde Park, for inclusion in their personnel files.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yay.
Thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Media Committee, as always, for all your excellent work.
Thank you, Media Committee.